Jacksonville City Council Chamber Chambers. Today is Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is our regularly scheduled monthly meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call it to order. I will ask Jake Norman, he is the new Associate Pastor of Corningstone Baptist Church, to come and lead us in the invocation, and then we'll do our pledges after that. So, Father Jake, it's your deal.
I invite you to join me in prayer. Father God, I just come to you lifting up these proceedings and that all things would be done with wisdom, that you grant wisdom to the mayor, to everyone involved, to council people, and to the city manager, all that are involved in the decisions. I pray that conversations would be had with grace, with respect, with humility towards one another as conversations happen. Lord, I pray for the prosperity and welfare of our city. Lift her before you and just place it in your hands. Pray that all things be done in a way that honors you, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge, first of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our first item is a special presentation. The Employer of the Month will be presented by JEDCO President Shane Pace. So, Mr. Pace.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. As we do every month, we would like to acknowledge and honor a local business here in Jacksonville. And this month, the award is being given to Family First. So, I do believe we have some folks here from Family First, is that right?
Just a couple.
Okay. Can I get someone, Dr. Alt, Dr. McGinnis, if you wouldn't mind coming up? Thank you. I'm gonna give this to you. Just say a few words myself first. So, for those of you who are not familiar with Family First, they are a huge part of our community. They were established in two thousand and twelve by Dr. McGinnis and Dr. Alt, and they provide urgent care and primary care. And they've been a huge benefit for my family. They've seen me, my kids, my wife, and so they're definitely a huge asset for us. But they also give back a lot to the community. And so, I looked up some stats today just to see kind of what they've done giving back. They have sponsored many, many Chamber of Commerce events, from the Morning Brew to sponsoring Tomato Fest, dodgeball tournaments and things like that. They recently hosted the Topic at Twelve here at the JEDCO office. There were about thirty-six people there that day. They provided lunch for them, and they gave them a lot of great information about health and wellness, some of the services they provide there at their facility. So, that was a great give back to the community. And then they also donate a lot to educational foundation, as well as back-to-school events and things like that. So, it's things like that that really help them stand out in the community, being someone who not only serves us on a daily basis, but also gives back what they have to the community. So, with that, I want to say thank you guys so much. And is there anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you all for your Sport of the Years, eleven years, and play on being here for a dozen more, at least.
Thank you so much.
You gotta get a picture.
Yes, you gotta take a picture. My mic is like extra hot.
Thank you guys for showing up and participating in that. Our next item on our agenda is our presentation of the Racial Profiling Report by Police Chief Joe Williams. Chief?
Mayor and Council, the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure requires law enforcement agencies that conduct traffic stops to report the number of contacts and the racial ethnic background of both drivers stopped. The law enforcement agency must report the statistics to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and the local governing body prior to March first of each year. In January of this year, I submitted an open records request with the Texas Department of Public Safety for racial and ethnic breakdown of all persons with a Texas driver's license with the zip code of seven-five-seven-six-six. I utilized that data to compare the number of stops on drivers prepared to other races and ethnicities. The Jacksonville Police Department conducted three thousand one hundred and thirty-six traffic stops in two thousand and twenty-two. I prepared the data from these traffic stops for our driver's license status to see if bias exists. White drivers were stopped fifty-eight point two percent of the time, black drivers were stopped twenty point eight percent of the time, while others, all other ethnic backgrounds, was twenty-one percent. Those drivers that were stopped were subjected to searches of their persons or vehicles on seven percent of all stops. Whites were searched three percent of the time, blacks were searched two point three-nine percent, and others were one point five-three. The Jacksonville Police Department is an accredited police department by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. Many of the standards the department met to achieve their accreditation status are centered around policies and practices to ensure and prevent bias-based policing. All employees are aware of the policies and practices and receive training throughout the year regarding bias-based policing. I have studied the data very extensively and do not believe the department to be engaged in any type of bias-based policing practices. These statistics mirror other cities I've worked in, and nothing stands out to me as a concern. In two thousand and twenty-two, we did not receive any complaints alleging bias following a traffic stop. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Very good. Thank you. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns of our citizens. Did we get any cards, Bruce? I don't think we did. Okay. We did not get any cards. We'll go to the next item, number eight, is our consent agenda. Items under our consent agenda require little or no deliberation by the council. You can see those there, minutes approval. The election that's coming up in May, so if you see anything that you want to pull out, you can certainly take those one by one. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, our consent agenda passed. We do not have any action out of executive session, so item number ten, discuss and consider with possible action granting two requested variances at Lake Jacksonville for a boathouse construction at one-ten County Road thirty-one oh-seven.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, there's a couple slides in the packet in front of you and on the screen here for the audience. The applicant, Mr. Chambly, is here today from one-ten County Road thirty-one oh-seven. He is seeking two variances, both of which went before the Lake Advisory Board at their January twenty-third meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of both variances. The first is related to Article Four, docks and boathouses, Section E, that no dock, pier or boathouse shall have an eve sidewall height more than twelve feet above the normal pool elevation. And we can take a look at some elevations here in a moment. And the second is related to Article Seven, lot use and occupancy restrictions, Section Seven. And at the bottom there, the last sentence of that section says, no habitable? Habitable, thank you. Structure with restrooms or sleeping quarters shall be constructed over or upon the waters of Lake Jacksonville in areas other than that of the concession area. Again, the Lake Advisory Board did recommend approval of both of these variances. Here's a snapshot on the next slide of the subject property. Does show a shoreline elevation, and these are approximate from Google Earth of four-twenty-three, with an elevation, again, from Google Earth, behind the property of about four-eighty-six. So, there's around five, I'm sorry, fifty feet of fall from the county road to the shoreline there, and that was one of the things that was discussed by the Lake Advisory Board. I'll say some other things they took into account at their meeting in January was that this construction of this structure, they felt would not block or prohibit the enjoyment of any surrounding properties, as the subject property benefits from a large shoreline, and really, nobody looking past where the boathouse would be improved upon. And then here, you see an elevation of the proposed structure. It does have an estimated second-floor eve height of about twenty-five feet above normal pool, with a total height of about thirty-seven feet above the normal pool elevation of Lake Jacksonville at four-twenty-two. So, again, sidewall height per Article Four was at twelve feet. Adding a second story, you're going to roughly double that, so it takes it to about twenty-five feet, overall thirty-seven. Happy to answer any questions. And again, the applicant's here, should you have any specific questions.
Anybody have any questions for James or the applicant?
Nope.
Okay. No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the, are we doing one or both at the same time?
Both. One at a time? Okay.
One at a time?
One at a time, yeah.
Well, which one are we doing first?
Article Four docks and boathouses, that's the one related to the eve height.
I'll make the motion that we approve the variance request on Article Four docks and boathouses, Section six E.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Rob Gowan, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Do we have any discussion we need to have there? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have another motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Articles, the variance request at one-ten County Road thirty-one oh-seven, Article Seven, lot use and occupancy restrictions, Section Seven.
Okay. We have a motion, again, by Mayor Pro Tim Rob Gowan.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Proceed on. Item number eleven is a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding a requested special use permit for fifteen-twenty-one East Russ to allow for an assisted living facility.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this is an item that we will not be able to take action on this evening based on the absence of Councilmember McCray and then a conflict of interest based on the location of the mayor's primary residence. However, we'll conduct the public hearing, we'll continue that to the next meeting in March, and we'll seek to take action then. But I will provide a little bit of background, and if anybody came out for the public hearing tonight, you'll be welcome to speak this evening. This item went before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their January seventeenth meeting. It did receive unanimous approval, a recommendation of approval, for its rezoning request to see multifamily with the SUP for a convalescent or assisted living home. And again, this is the former Gardendale, kind of tucked back in the woods just east of Bill McCray Ford, so.
Okay. So, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. If someone, anyone would like to come forward and speak in favor of or against, you're certainly welcome to do that. All right. Okay, seeing none, we will not close that public hearing, but we will leave it open until the date certain, which will probably be our next council meeting in March.
March fourteenth, six P.M.
So, we will leave that public hearing open until then. Number twelve is to discuss and consider with possible action ordinance modifying the city of Jacksonville's sign regulation.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. A little bit of background on this, the signed regulations, as are in place today, were updated July twenty-first by council adoption of an ordinance. That option, that ordinance, rather, came after about a twenty-year, if you will, delay, or not necessarily delay, but absence of updating the sign regulations. Signs and technologies are consistently changing. It also came after review and recommendation from Mark Priestner of Planning Concepts. He's a third-party planner and work with JEDCO. After starting enforcement of the ordinance in February of two thousand and twenty-two, we encountered some concerns, if you will, specifically from the business community and the council at the August, I'm sorry, the April two thousand and twenty-two Agenda Workshop, sought in the best interest of the community to establish an ad hoc sign committee, which you did. You assigned about six individuals to that recommending, representing the business community. They met in May, June, and July, and developed six primary recommendations, and we'll go over those here in a minute. We did review these recommendations at the October fourth City Council Agenda Workshop, and these recommendations were presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission at the January seventeenth meeting, at which they received unanimous recommendation for So, the primary recommendations from the ad hoc sign committee were these. One, that they increase the allowances for grand opening displays be increased, both in the duration and the types of signs, and that has been accounted for in this ordinance as presented to the council on October fourth. Also, to increase the allowable display duration for temporary signs with a permit and allow for concurrent display by multiple businesses. Prior or as currently worded in the ordinance, temporary signs are restricted to seven days per calendar quarter. The committee recommended thirty days per calendar quarter, so one month per quarter, but increasing the permit fee from twenty-five to fifty dollars, and also to allow concurrent display on lots with more than one business. The existing ordinance that's in place, if you had a strip center, only one of the tenants in that strip center could have a temporary sign permit or sign displayed at any one time. However, they felt like if Jersey Mike's and Great Clips, for instance, wanted to both display back-to-school specials of some nature, they should be able to put out the signs, should they have the appropriate permit concurrently. So, that was that one. The next was to clarify that signs on soft substrates attached in a permanent fashion may be used as wall signs. We were blessed to have one of the owners of Gibson Signs on the committee, so he knew a lot about the latest and greatest as it pertains to signs. And so, this was just clarification that soft substrates could be used as wall signs. We do have certain businesses in town that elect, especially when they're starting, to maybe use a banner or some type of material, but affix it somewhat permanently to the wall, maybe above their door. And we just wanted to clarify that that wasn't going to be treated as a banner, which would be classified as a temporary sign. The fourth was to allow sandwich board and blade signs to be displayed and basically subject to the same regulations in all non-residential zoning districts. Previously, or as currently worded in the ordinance, sandwich boards have different rules in the downtown district than they do, or in the downtown area as defined by the sign code than they do in other commercial areas, and blade signs, I believe, are restricted to only downtown or the downtown area. So, they wanted basically even playing field across the board. The fifth was to reduce regulations on flag poles in residential zoning districts, essentially just regulating the condition of the flags and the flag poles, but not regulating the amount or the size of flags. And the sixth was to allow feather banners or feather pennants, as they're sometimes called, to be displayed during business hours and subject to additional regulations. Those specific signs have been prohibited, you know, across, by the current ordinance, whether it be temporary permit, no permit, they were just flat-out prohibited. They're recommending, again, that those be allowed during business hours, limited to three per any one property and only at driveway approaches. So, if a property benefits from having multiple approaches, let's say four, they could have three of those approaches with those signs. If it's an undefined approach, meaning there's not really a curb or a curb cut, so to speak, and it's just kind of level or at grade with the street that intersects the development, that would be treated as one, and they could have one feather penny out there. So, again, this at multi-tenant strip centers, if there's three businesses in there and there's one drive approach, they get one sign. We're trying to declutter temporary signage throughout the city. That's kind of a quick snapshot of the six recommendations as previously presented. And Mayor, per your recommendation at the workshop, we did include in the ordinance amendment that feather banners will require a permit, however, it'll be no charge permit, just to make sure that folks are apprised of the rules and regulations.
Okay, that's great. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we update our sign regulations with this ordinance amendment.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Rob Gowan, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number thirteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approving an ordinance modifying the development service fee schedule.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as part of this upcoming budget development, staff does plan to develop a master fee ordinance. This is pretty common practice that many cities in the region and across the state have moved to. It's basically a consolidation of all the fees the city charges, whether it be for recreational purposes or redevelopment purposes, into one ordinance that we can easily take a look at every budget year to look at our revenues and then adjust the fees to market. But I have before you this evening just five fees related directly to development, which I'm recommending approval. We are way behind market on these fees, and we need to bring ourselves back into market just to attempt to recoup some of the costs related to development and the staff that spend their days handling that. So, on the residential side, I'm recommending moving from a new construction permit price of a nickel a foot to four hundred dollar base fee and then twenty cents per square foot over two thousand square feet under roof. You see that that is better aligned with the market comparators of Henderson, Athens, and Kilgore. Henderson starts with a base fee of six hundred and then goes to the twenty cents. Kilgore starts with four hundred and then goes to thirty cents over one thousand square feet, and Athens uses a sliding scale to determine the cost. On remodels, recommending just a flat fee of one fifty. That would basically be an interior remodel under the existing roof line. Henderson is one twenty-five, Kilgore's two fifty. On the commercial side, we're also at a nickel per square foot with our sister city there in Henderson, if you will, at twenty-three cents to forty cents per square foot. Athens is based on value, as is Kilgore. That seems to be the trend in commercial permits. Staff is recommending that we generally mirror Kilgore's process with a value-based approach, and then a third of that value then being computed into a plan review fee. A lot of times when we have more complex commercial plans come in, we outsource that, and if we don't appropriately address the cost of the permit on the front end, we end up starting in the hole as soon as we outsource plan review. And then on the planning and zoning side, in the zoning board of adjustment, we're currently at seventy-five dollars for applications to go before those two boards. By the time we do the legal notices, we're behind already at seventy-five. You see in Henderson, they're at one fifty. Athens starts at three hundred dollars and moves up to five hundred dollars based on the size of the parcel. Kilgore is also at three hundred, and we're recommending two hundred. And on zoning board, we're at seventy-five, with Henderson at one fifty, Athens at two fifty, Kilgore at one seventy-five, and we're looking to move to two hundred. These would go into effect with about ten days, ten days after passage of this ordinance this evening, should the council choose. I ran some just general numbers on the table on the next slide, so just to give you some kind of synopsis, or some scenarios, rather. So, a new residential twelve-hundred-square-foot home, the permit would currently cost sixty dollars, that would move to four hundred dollars, because it's under the two-thousand-square-foot threshold in which you start to add twenty cents per square foot. New residential of two-five-hundred would go from one twenty-five to five hundred. In Henderson, that same permit would be seven hundred. In Athens, it would be four hundred, and Kilgore would be eight hundred and fifty dollars. And then new commercial, an industrial structure of fifty thousand square feet, would currently have a permit costing Jacksonville of twenty-five hundred dollars. In Henderson, eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars. In Athens, three thousand, and in Kilgore, thirty-eight hundred. We're recommending moving to that thirty-eight hundred mark. New commercial of fifty thousand square feet with a ten million dollar value, that permit fee from staff, as recommended, would be in the neighborhood of sixteen thousand. It's currently two thousand, five hundred dollars. And in Henderson, I'll say, based on some of their fee structures, that same permit would be about fifty thousand dollars at the twenty-three cents per square foot. I'm sorry, if it was a two-hundred-thousand-square-foot building, it'd be about forty-eight thousand dollars or so.
Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the possible action approving an ordinance modifying the development services fee schedule.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit, second by Mayor Pro Tim Rob Gowan. Any other questions? And you know, on the surface, you think, well, it's a fee just to be able to build, but I'm sure there's a lot of goes into studying the plans, making sure they're good, whatever they do back there, but a lot of time.
Yeah, there's a lot of staff time wrapped up in this, and what we don't want to do is have the burden of that fall on existing taxpayers. New development should basically carry the burden of their development, and we want to be cognizant of that, especially as it pertains to larger industrial facilities. But again, we need to be aligned with the market.
Sure. Okay. We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fourteen is to discuss and consider with possible action interlocal agreement with Cherokee County regarding subdivision regulations in the ETJ.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, this is an agreement that we're actually by law have to have between the county and the city. We had one, and it's sunset, and so we're just getting that back into place. What this does is just defines and who reviews subdivision plaits if they're in the ETJ as opposed to the city. That could be handled different ways. Some cities elect to review and hold development in the ETJ to their subdivision standards. With the lack of the city's ability to annex now, it's becoming kind of the trend to just let the counties review subdivision plaits that fall in the ETJ. And so, that's generally what this does. The city's responsible for plating subdivision regulations within the city limits. In the ETJ, it would fall to the county. However, the stipulation is that any city-owned land that may be in the county, there's some up by Love's Lookout and other places, those would still abide by the city's subdivision ordinance, as would any lots around or with shoreline on Lake Jacksonville. This was approved by the county commissioners at their meeting on January twenty-fourth. So, if it was to be approved tonight, it would be finalized.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the interlocal agreement with Cherokee County regarding subdivision regulations in the ETJ.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit.
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Rob Gowan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fifteen is to discuss and consider with possible action an interlocal agreement with Cherokee County for inmate services.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this ILA was also considered at the January twenty-fourth meeting of the county commissioners. It was approved at that meeting. The sheriff, he's not here with us this evening, but Sheriff Dixon does a great job of supporting us. One of the ways he does that is through kind of a trustee work crew that he helps supervise, or rather, his team helps supervise. We benefit from them kind of on a sporadic basis throughout the year. We're looking just to kind of formalize that to best utilize the services they're able to provide. This is a voluntary crew, the men and women that serve on the trustee work crew. It's something they look forward to. It allows them to get some fresh air. We've used them since I've been the manager to clean out old city hall, maintain ballfields, weed whack, cemetery maintenance, things like that. So, we're looking just to make sure that we kind of formalize that agreement. Per this ILA, the county would provide at least five trustees for eight hours one day per week. That could look like four days in a row, depending on the task, or it could look like four Mondays out of a month. But we would get about a hundred and sixty labor hours per month from the crew. The projects would be inside the city limits or the ETJ. They provide the supervision. Generally, the city provides any kind of tools or equipment. But we've had really good success with this in the past, and again, we're just looking to formalize it. For this, what the city would do is offer to do with the county is to reduce their lease payment for use of the former police station on Larissa by a proportionate amount. So, it would be their lease payment, I think, due for this month would be five hundred dollars, and so, it would reduce that by five hundred dollars. Or six hundred this month, we'll reduce it by five hundred. And then, we'd have, it has a one-year automatic renewal for three additional years.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we do an interlocal agreement with Cherokee County for inmate services.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Rob Gowan, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number sixteen is to discuss and consider with possible action the budgeted purchase of a backhoe.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, supply chain continues to be a burden on us obtaining things, and especially for the price we budgeted, but we came in very close to budget on this through a source well contract on a new backhoe, one fifty-three. It was budgeted at one forty-eight. We do anticipate delivery summer of two thousand and twenty-three. This was actually slated not to arrive this fiscal year originally, but another municipality backed out, and so this would be a purchase of a new backhoe. And we did recently sell a secondary or backup backhoe for thirty-two-five. So, Public and Community Services has been doing a great job of looking through equipment that we're no longer utilizing, and then utilizing gov deals to receive funds for those and put it toward new equipment.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit. Any discussion?
Now, when we got the new fire trucks, we got to drive them. No, I said when we bought the new fire trucks, we got to drive them.
I see where you're going with that.
Okay, good. I just want to drive the backhoe. Thank you. Thank you.
That's not a part of your motion.
We've already done the motion. That was the discussion. Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number seventeen is to discuss and consider the possible action of new social media policies for employees.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, Daniel did a good job of summarizing this for you at your workshop last Thursday. Social media's been around for a little while, so we're adopting a policy as many cities have for their employees. It does regulate and just kind of establishes the expectation that we may monitor their pages. It prohibits posts representing the city on their private time or on their personal pages. And I think most importantly, probably what it does is that it establishes procedures for establishing any kind of other city official pages. We obviously want to know if any of those are to be made, if there's a need, and to verify that and then manage them appropriately. There are certain open records requests and retention schedules that apply to social media, as with email accounts, and we want to make sure that we're following that. So that's what the purpose of this policy is for.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt no social media policies for employees.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rob Gowan, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eighteen is to discuss and consider the possible action updating Section 1 General Policies 1.01 Authority 1.04 Applicability of Personnel Policies 1.08 Unlawful Harassment 1.09 Complaint Procedures 1.10 Investigation of Complaints Discrimination and Harassment 1.11 Persons with Disabilities 1.12 Policy and Changes in Employee Suggestions in Section 9 Health and Safety 9.03 Weapons Policy.
Mayor, City Council, Assistant City Manager Renessa is going to tackle this one for us. She's been spearheading these.
Very good, Mayor. That was an excellent recount of it. Okay, so the city of Jacksonville adopted its current policies by council adoption in May of 2019. The policies exist to assist the organization in providing clear communication to the employees regarding benefits and expectation of behaviors in work, also with setting operating standards and defining appropriate procedures. So during last fiscal year, 2022, the city manager authorized a small committee of the executive team to come together and to review the policies. And so we started with some of the policies that were more prevalent at the time. If you recall, we went through Section 5 with the compensation study. Now we've backed it up to just Section 1, and so we're systematically going through the policies. And as we've gone through the policies, we've identified areas that need particular clarity or that should be updated completely with the language in order to meet the laws and also to be in keeping with the policies and procedures that we're actually doing or practicing versus what was actually written. So in Section 1.01, there is a specific recommendation or specific reference to a policy committee comprised of the city council to review the policies, and that is actually not a committee that has been sanctioned by ordinance, nor is that an active committee that actually has members associated with it at this time. And so at this particular time, we're asking that that particular piece of the policy be updated to remove the reference to a subcommittee of the city council. In 1.04, the city, at one point in time, contracted with a law firm for legal services. And so therefore, the city attorney was exempted from the city's policies and procedures. Now that we have our city attorney actually on board, we want him to be incorporated with the rest of the employees and the policies, and so we want to remove the reference of him being exempt from the city policies. 1.08 Unlawful Harassment prohibits unlawful discrimination practice of harassment along with any other discriminatory practices based on Title VII. And so we wanted to update these sections to make sure that we were incorporating everything that the federal government from the EEOC or any other laws of the land would regulate for our particular organization. 1.09 Complaint Procedures, our complaint procedures were really not clear in our policies, and we wanted to make sure that employees really understood how to file a complaint, what the process would be once they filed a complaint, what to expect as far as any response from the city and from the organization, actually what type of complaints we would investigate and how we would investigate them and how we would handle different complaints. So there wasn't really a policy on anonymous complaints versus a complaint that was inked, and we wanted to make sure to identify for all employees how that practice would actually be moving forward. In 110, it just really outlines how an investigation will take place. These are all new sections that we're adding into the policies that were not previously existing. And then Section 111 and 112, they had to be renumbered to add in the new section. So those were really only adjusted by numbering. Are there any questions regarding Section 1? If not, okay. So then the next section we have is the weapons policy. The city has always allowed for employees to have, that have license to carry, to carry concealed handguns. But there was a particular provision in there that required that those employees notify the police department by way of the chief of police that they were licensed to carry and they intended to carry concealed handguns on the property. It also did not restrict their ability to carry in open meeting areas, such as the municipal court or the city council chambers for the city of Jacksonville, as well as it did not really give quite the expectation of what the city would like from them. And so what we've done is, we have completely specifically looked up several policies for us, and we were able to take a couple of those and create the policy just for the city of Jacksonville. But we have prohibited handguns or concealed handguns on the premises such as municipal courtrooms, as well as city council chambers or any that would fall under the Open Meetings Act. We also have prohibited the ability to carry concealed handguns in the secured area of the police department, as well as set out the expectations of the employees that we in no way, shape, or form expect for them to become a militia or turn into security for our facilities, and that any discharge of their weapon at our facilities is not in the course and scope of their employment. We also wanted to make sure to properly identify that no open carry by a on-duty city employee with the exception of peace officers is allowed or permitted in the workplace. And I believe that's the gist of the handgun policy. And so are there any questions on that?
Good job.
Thank you.
We've heard those. All entertain a motion.
Oh, boy, this is a big one. Okay, I make a motion to...
Approve what she just said.
Update, update Section 1, 1.01, 1.04, 1.08, 1.09, 1.10, 1.11, and 1.12, and Section 9. When who?
9.03.
Oh, excuse me.
Just finishing it for you.
Oh, 9.03.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit. I'll second that, so I'll take it. Any discussion we might need? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 19 is to discuss and consider the possible action, a possible award of a contract for a parrot damage sewer line.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, this was not discussed on Thursday's workshop or at Thursday's workshop. It's kind of been an evolving item over the last couple of days here. Neil Stokes of, I'm sorry, Neil Holland of Stokes and Associates is here this evening to kind of give us a little bit more background and kind of what we need to do to get this operational again. But it's about a 500-foot stretch of pipe between Philip and Briar Cove on the south side of 79. Eight-inch concrete pipe has failed and needs to be addressed. We're having to take some unusual measures right now to keep it operational for the businesses and homes in that area. So Neil.
Yes, sir. Again, my name is Neil Holland of Stokes and Associates Engineering. Received a call Friday from Randall. He was experiencing some sewer backups on existing sewer line just east of the Halipina Tree on 79, again, between Briar Cove and Philip Avenue. And that'll correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, is I believe he sent city crews out on Friday to investigate the problem. They had used a sewer cleaning machine to try to identify where the problem was, located that, and went out to expose that. And when the state, they notified the state because it's in State Right-of-Way. The state did not want them to do a point repair of that specific manhole collapse. It's their opinion that it's underneath an existing storm drain pipe that's about five foot diameter. And I, yeah, so you've got some... This was last Friday when the crews went out to expose that. The sewer line is located just immediately right of that concrete storm drain pipe, and it's about five, five to seven feet deep probably in that area right there. So to go in and excavate that, expose that, it's going to really compromise, potentially could compromise an existing storm drain pipe, and we would really have a big problem on our hands. So he asked that we get involved. We probably should break through over Monday morning. We've measured this, had not had a chance to look at that in detail. If you go back to one of the first slides right there, that's kind of an overview of it. You see a lot of colored lines. It's hard to see. But what we can do, you're looking at five different utilities that are in that right of way. And if you would go to the next slide.
No, I'm thinking that's all I got. I apologize, Neil.
Anyway, there's another slide that shows looking down that right of way, we have about nine to 12 feet of room to work in there with all five utilities in the way. And as you get toward the lower end of the project near Halipina Tree, the sewer line actually goes completely under that storm drain pipe. What we're proposing to do, we believe, is probably going to be cheaper to directional bore that new pipe in and install it, but we won't know that exactly until we're able to look at our survey and fill notes tomorrow. In our opinions, I think that if we were to board this project and do the tie-ins, we're looking at hopefully a cap of about $80,000 would be our first estimate without the benefit of looking at a lot of detail from our survey.
What's the size of that sewer line?
It's an eight-inch.
That's right.
Eight-inch concrete. It appears that the line collapsed. You're aware of some of our concrete lines that we're going through right now. It's just a part of the condition of that. And Texas Department is concerned that, you know, if we just go in there and repair that, that they're afraid that we'll have others that'll occur as a result of that. So they want it all in place.
Seems like I remember this same line failed between the point that you're going to start toward Bill McRae Ford years ago, and we had to replace that.
Correct. You went from Philip Street, you went north, I'm sorry, east, past the dealership.
Leadership, yeah.
Replaced that, and you also did that by directional bore also because of the utility. So it's unfortunate, but it is something that needs to be taken care of. Right now, I think they have a service company that comes out and pumps out the manholes so that we have positive flow for the commercial users that are on the street. Do you have any answer to your questions?
When you said eight, I thought you were going to say 800,000. So 80,000 seems like a bargain, but I don't...
Well, again, and the thing that I mentioned, unless we find something that's unique and different, we'll certainly report that back to you. And I think that would be a reasonable fair price to simply fleet that work.
Length of time, start-finish is for a month or so.
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. We probably, once they mobilize, it would probably take maybe seven to 10 days. And then I think that would be the most, because we're going to have to go back and tighten services that are there.
Sure.
And that are, that join the property there and send you that.
It'd be nice if we could talk Texas Department into cleaning up that concrete spill.
Yeah.
The big hump when you turn right and fell straight.
Yeah, we need to, we can make that happen.
Yeah, while they're out, we can hit it with a backhoe or something.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So we need a motion to...
That'd be great, yeah, if you'd authorize me to get that contract underway when we get some pricing.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we give James the authority to award a contract to repair a damaged sewer line on 79.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rob Gowan, second by Hubert Robinson, Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Number 20, open forum for mayor and councils. Y'all have anything you'd like to discuss? Down at the end, Mayor Pro Tem?
No, no.
I don't. Item 21, city manager's report. We'll go to that.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, just a few departing items here. A week ago today, February 7th, the zoning board of adjustment appeals and codes issued, sorry, issued demolition orders for 19 unoccupied and substandard structures throughout town. There's a picture of a representative property there. We'll start packaging up bid opportunities and posting those on the website. So at the top, we have a business tab. Underneath that, bid opportunities. Within the next 30 days or so, we should have some bid opportunities listed to get these 19 structures removed. Some of the property owners have elected to pull permits and remove them themselves, so we'll manage or monitor, rather, the success of that. However, the others will be funded by the city, and then liens will be placed against the property. Bottom left of the screen or the slide there, the city later this spring, hopefully in March, will be conducting a cleanup effort at Sea Scout Park. There is a historical recognition plaque at this park, but Renessa worked with Texas Historical Commission, state, and local offices to ensure that our cleanup efforts would not violate any kind of conditions on the property. We are going to be hosting another cleanup day Saturday, March 25th. Details are to follow. Be checking the city's website and Facebook page, but it'll kind of be two components. One will be a litter cleanup, the other will be household trash disposal event that will be centered on the John Alexander Gym. And then the litter event will be kind of spread out throughout town and potentially have a different rendezvous point. But both events will probably start sometime around eight or nine in the morning and seek to wrap up by around lunchtime. That's grant-funded, so we had our Public and Community Services Department, they applied for a grant and were awarded, or just right around $10,000 to help us fund that this year. So it took a little bit of strain off the budget, and we appreciate it. We do have ongoing fire hydrant inspections throughout town. We have a network of about 560 inspections, so we annually inspect those. So if you see firefighters out there opening hydrants, flushing them, oiling them, and inspecting them, that's what they're doing. They're also this year placing blue reflectors in the middle of the street. They basically epoxy those down, and that helps them locate hydrants, especially and particularly at night. Did want to thank Encore. They had excellent communication with the city about a week ago or so when we had the kind of rain, sleet, cold weather. I know we did have some customers impacted primarily based on a downed power pole along the O'Keefe corridor there. However, largely, we did really well. I know there were customers in the Tyler area out for upwards of four or five days without power. I think, one, we have great relationship with Encore. Two, we benefit from having their service center on Alabama Street, so we have transformers and linemen and supplies right here in Jacksonville, and I think that certainly makes a difference. Lastly, just an update on some other grants and park-related projects. Buckner Park Playground Grant Project, we should be bidding that soon. Staff's in the process of reviewing the 60% plans. We'll review 90% plans, and then that project will go out for bid. We did finalize and submit with the help of SPI a trail grant for Lincoln Park, so that application deadline, I believe, was in early February, and we got that grant in prior to that. The Lake Jacksonville Boating Access Grant, we're expecting construction this fall. And then our fire department received over $30,000 of funding to send four current EMTs to paramedic schools. So again, a grant that they pursued on something that had been budgeted, and we were awarded that grant, so fudos to the fire department staff for taking the time to do that.
You ready?
That's all I have.